September twenty-second will come my order. Roll call.
Michael Blizia.
Here.
Vincent Cutterford.
Here.
Joseph Seibert.
Here.
Teresa DeAndrea. Jeffrey Miller.
Yes.
Gregory Walters.
Here.
And Norman Ritchie.
Here. Please, Stafford, Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we need approval for the minutes for the regular meeting of August twenty-fifth and September tenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a first by any Cutterford.
Yeah, I'll second.
We have a second by Joe Seibert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both ayes have. Treasurers' report.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the Borough Manager's Treasurers' report.
I'm sorry.
You're going to read it or just?
No, we don't read it.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, we have a motion to accept it by Joe Seibert. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both ayes have it. Approval of the bills. Are there any questions on the bills? Okay, I have one question. September eleventh Keystone Services for like close to twelve hundred dollars.
The Connectwise? Yeah. The Connectwise service that is being questioned, it's a service that our IT people can get into our computers to do updates and to do security measures.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I saw on September eleventh also the sewer had a charge of ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents for dog food.
Right. That's to stimulate the bacteria.
I thought that's what it was.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, we need a motion to pay the bills.
I'll make a motion. We pay the bills.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first by Mike Blizia, second by Joe Seibert. Roll call.
Michael Blizia.
Yes.
Joseph Seibert.
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller.
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford.
Yes.
Gregory Walters.
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie.
Yes. Next item, other items in concern. Anything from council?
My, I just want to thank how Tracy and all the Borough workers for the help they gave us with the hill climb. And I also want to mention the faith church. They were nice enough to give us their, they actually used their fifteen passenger van, shuttle both days, which is really pathetic because it alleviates the parking problems on North Street. So, thanks everybody.
Anybody else in council have anything? Anything from the public?
Steve Weickman, try and make it quick. There's something that recently happened, I think is very petty, and I'm going to just voice my concern. As you know, I own a Weatherly Post office, bought that in two thousand sixteen. When I bought that, it was pretty dilapidated on the outside. So, we bought it, we put thirty-some thousand dollars in on the outside to make it look good, which it does look good. Maintain a property, cut the grass, pay a couple hundred dollars a year for somebody to take care of the grass or a lot next to it that we bought at share of sale. I also bought, Mike Blizia's Don Vinyl's old building two years ago. As you remember, when that building, no due respect to you, Mike, the north wall was ready to fall on the second street, okay? We all seen that. It was like that for a long time. Actually, the toilet was probably ready to fall on the, on First Street. It was very, very dilapidated. And the rear building. Purchased that, put forty-five thousand dollars in the end of that, in the building, outside only. Had the lot across the street doing work there, maintain the property, keep those properties probably better maintained in a lot of people's homes in this town. So, the problem is, we take care of this property, and there's all this other property in town that's dilapidated. I don't know if you guys are given fines, but obviously it's not very effective. But come Friday, I get a text ma- a text message saying I need to move my garbage off the street. I have fourteen hours before pickup. So, I'm told I have to remove my garbage that I had there, that I put there on Friday. Put garbage out there since I bought the building, sometimes during the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, never a word. My tenant has been living there over a year. She puts her garbage out on a Friday. Nothing. Here comes the Weatherly hill climb. Now I have to move my garbage on a Friday. So, I get up Saturday to move the garbage, and I see garbage everywhere else. Now, how many other people were texting a message of take their garbage back into their property besides myself? I was told it's because the hill climb's going. So, the property, I, this is Weatherly. You can't pick your nose without somebody knowing about it, all right?
Okay.
Now, let's be honest about this, all right? So, here, here's the East Main Street. I've been asking for years to have the truck route, something done with that. It's a state road. It's a state road. But yet, two weekends a month, a year, you shut it down and make tractor trailers go down by, by my building that could do damage and maybe harm somebody, and that's okay. We put plastic bags over the truck route and all that nonsense. And I have to friggin' pay for damage done to my building. God forbid, something happens during the hill climb, and that building gets hurt. My son's in that building. He gets hurt. God forbid this city, because there's going to be a lawsuit of epic proportion on this town. I know you got a permit to do this, but for me to get a friggin' text message to move my garbage, that's always out there. I paid for four garbages there when I had it, four sores. There's not even a sink or toilet in the one, but I gotta pay soar bill for that. I pay electric water and all that for four, four bit units in that building. And I get picked on, or not picked on. I get told I gotta move, move my garbage because of the, the hill climb. That's petty.
Well, first of all, let me say this. It never came from this office.
Yeah, it did.
It didn't come from me or?
It came from council and it came from the Hill Climb Association.
What you're saying to me now is new.
Yeah, well, Harold, I'm sorry. I don't believe, I don't believe you.
I'm sorry, but we did not say anything about garbage.
I take care of these properties very well. When I want to get help, I get shit, all right? You shut those roads down, and somebody gets hurt. Who's going to be liable for that? You have truck drivers coming in from White Haven. They don't know that road's closed. They don't see a truck detour route because you have garbage bags over them. So, they gotta come down my, around my building, do damage, more damage, not this weekend. The last hill climb, you had a tow truck, you had a big record of truck, tow a tractor trailer back up the friggin' road. So, who's responsible when that building gets hit, when those detours are not effective, when you close it for the hill climb? Who's responsible if somebody gets hurt? Is it PennDOT or is it the Borough? I'm just asking. Because you might not think it's going to happen. I don't know. It might.
Okay.
So, who else was told to move their garbage Friday night at ten o'clock?
I have no idea because we didn't pass that order along to anybody, not from my office.
Yeah, well, I beg to differ with you, Joey. I beg to differ.
Who sent it out?
The co-officer. Who the hell do you think to so, gave it out? Brineski, yeah. I had, the co-officer, Tom.
That, if he did that, we weren't aware of it.
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't believe you. I'm sorry.
Don't believe me. I don't care.
I, I don't.
I'm telling you the truth. I have no reason to lie to you.
Well, it had to come from this, this Borough building. It had to come from the Hill Climb Association.
It did not come from this Borough building, and if I said it once.
Well, I was told that Tracy knew about it. You.
Did I know about it?
Yeah.
I, I really don't know what you're talking about.
All right, well, again.
Hey, listen, if I did something, I'd, I'd own up to it.
Well, how petty is this? Honestly, how petty is this to move my garbage? With fifty other weeks a year, it's okay I have garbage out there on a Friday. Hill climb comes, I gotta friggin' move it back.
Can I say something?
That's.
I, I want to finish, I want to finish what we got going on. Steve.
Mr. Weickman.
Why, you do, could you tell me the date by chance that you received that text?
Friday evening.
Friday evening. So.
He got a text?
I, I don't know. I don't know, but I'm just looking to see if it was in, if it was in Tom's report or anything.
Okay.
Because the, this meeting that you're here, and I agree, you shouldn't have text about the trash. Like, I, I can't see why you would have done it.
Exactly.
But at the end of the day, every other meeting, every other meeting here is about trash and cleanups and like, we're, we're constantly hearing about stuff needs to be.
What he's done.
Stuff needs to be done, stuff needs to be done. I mean, we're standing on top going, you gotta do more, you gotta do more, you gotta do more. So, I, I can't imagine for one second, certainly I, if you don't believe, you won't believe, but I had absolutely positivity. It didn't come. We, as council, we're saying to Tom, you need to work harder on cleaning up this stuff in town because we've told about it all the time. So, yes, we are constantly asking Tom to do more.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
So, so yes, from that standpoint, I'm, I'm not speaking for council. I'm speaking for myself. But I, I know that we've given him the directive to, to do more and do more and do more. So, I don't know where that all came from, but I'm just looking in his report to see where it came out of.
All right, that's fine.
But I, I don't, I don't believe you were a target situation by any stretch.
Well, then how many other people received the text that day?
And again, I, I don't, I'm trying to get his reports to see.
Right, because it's highly visible, first and Packer, right? Highly visible area.
I, I don't have an answer for you.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just making it known. That I believe is very petty.
I could see where you.
And disrespectful. Hey, Mr. Weickman, how about you move that garbage just until Sunday, until the hill climb's over. Nothing. I get a text.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So, that would affect that too.
Right.
But everybody has.
So, everybody should get it. Not just you.
Right.
All right, I'm done. That's all I had to say.
The twelfth?
Steve, our garbage ordinance is, you're not supposed to put it out twenty-four hours.
Well, it's first of three hundred sixty-five, three hundred sixty-five days a year. I mean, every Sunday or whenever you have to do it. Why can't I have garbage out there Friday since you've been there?
He's not first.
Never a complaint. Hill climb comes, bam, complaint.
Well, our point is, if he's going to harass you, then it's going to have to go over the whole time.
Well, he was harassed, he asked to do it, and I, and I obliged.
Well, I appreciate that because, you know, but, but truly, it is, you're only allowed to put out twenty-four hours before garbage.
I was told fourteen hours. So, whether it's fourteen or twenty-four, wherever the ordinance says.
I think it's one oh one. One oh one Carbon is the address.
One oh one.
And a code.
And then one oh three.
Not listed in here.
Steve, it's one oh one.
One oh one, one oh three, yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, God.
Also, I want to say it's not supposed to go out until Sunday. So, people would follow the rules, it would have been a problem.
I agree.
Oh, I'm sorry, but I can't provide that early.
I think we should put it in the Borough Newsletter that that's what the ordinance is, twenty-four hours. Because there is a lot of people do put it out earlier.
I'm fine by that. I'm more than fine by that.
There's a lot of people.
But on my way to move the garbage, I see garbage on Passage Street.
Well, so, I mean, people will put it out, but if it's good for one, it's going to have to be good for everyone.
Well, I agree. That's why I voiced my opinion because I think it was kind of petty. I put garbage out there seven days a week sometimes, not a word. Keep my property clean. Put a lot of money investment into these properties. I wish a lot of our people did that too. If people would back up the, the ordinances and the fines.
Steve, we know you take care of it, so we feel appreciated that.
Well, it would have been actually a good strike, a phone call. Hey, can you move, why did your officer have it for me Friday evening?
The council did not even know about the call.
And we didn't know about it.
Catch, catch stuff from the.
I didn't say it, so look at me, though. He said it. You already got a stop meeting. You can't take care of this.
Okay, that's enough. Does anybody else have anything? Go ahead.
Lee Baker, thirty-three Klein Street. No pun intended, not to be the dead goat, but concerned, have we come to any kind of resolution with the goat problem? After the meeting, I read in the Herald that there were no goats allowed. So, what is our final decision, if I may ask? And then I just want to pass something else on. Are we still working on it? Is it a if, a maybe, I don't know, or is the, up in the air or?
That was, they were grandfathered.
You were here at the last meeting?
Yes, I was.
And, yeah, because you questioned the ordinance that we adopted.
Yes.
Well, the ordinance that we adopted, six months ago, that was when we put in no goats. It was not in there prior to that.
Okay, so are you telling me that she's grandfathered in?
I'm telling you, I don't know what the zoning officer, code enforcement officer said. However, if those were there before the ordinance went into effect, that person would be entitled to have the same number of goats they had before.
Okay, on that note.
Not replaced. I said, yeah, not replacing them.
Okay, just let me just throw some things at you then here quick. First of all, does anybody have the, know what the lifespan of a goat is? No, I'll tell you. Fifteen years. Fifteen years. Now, I have another dilemma. My daughter wants to buy that property and build a house up there. Okay, so we're back to square one. There's many things that are wrong with this situation. First of all, when she applied for them things, it should have been questioned. Mary Jo, where do you live? I live on Butt Street. Oh, isn't that in town? Oh, red flag should have went off like an atom bomb. Well, let me go see. And then, who be it, the ordinance officer, who whatever, should have went up there and said, what do you have to facilitate these animals? Just a few things. I won't take up much more of your time. Keeping two goats in a pen can be a number of problems for both the owner and the animals. Behavioral problems. They get aggressive. They're in an eight-by-eight pen constantly. Health problems, pneumonia, bacteria, hoof disease, aggressiveness, destruction. They get aggressive. They want to try and escape. They're not going to hurt me, but they could hurt someone else. Lack of proper exercise. They can get hoof disease. They get lame. They can't walk around. There's so many things that are just so wrong with this situation. And again, uh, my daughter wants to build a house up there. What am I going to tell her? Don't build a house because there's two goats in an eight-by-eight pen? Tonight before I came down to the meeting, I walked up from Klein Street to the Butt Street stop sign, and I stopped. Voila, there it was. Now, I don't know if anybody has been to the property. Greg, you had asked me the other day. I don't know if you went down. Mike, you know the situation. You know where it's at. I don't know if anybody has taken me up on that offer. Were you up there, Jeff?
Twice.
Twice. I, I, like I said, I don't want to be a whiner. I'm trying to do this very nice and I'm conducting myself in a mannerly way. But I just don't think that this was considered when it was, uh, when it was brought to light. I mean, I just don't think that. It, it should have been considered more. What are the animals doing? What kind of life are they living? And their, 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 what they're in. I mean, an eight-by-eight pen, people, just think about that. Would you be like to go, Mr. Officer there? He, he knows what it's like to be in an eight-by-eight cell because he puts people in there. They don't like it. But two goats, the size of me, a hundred and fifty pounds, you know, that's, that's just, it's just not right. So, my, it goes back now to my right of quality of life. Who should proceed? A person or a goat? I think somewhere that I'm worthy more than a goat. Nothing against animals. My sign is the Capricorn. I'm a goat. So, I love animals. So, what, that's just where I stand. Again, I'm not going to keep beating the dead horse. I just think we need to really think about this a little more. And again, it's hard after you make a decision, I understand, to go and say, hey, we made a boover. We're human. We make errors. But we really did make a mistake on this. And you have to approach it that way. That's, that's the way I look at it. That's all I have to say.
Thanks for your time. There's really nothing. What can we do legally about that?
Okay, did our code enforcement officer actually go out and issue a report to us?
Yes.
And what did it say?
Uh, no, wait, about what?
About the goats.
Yeah, it should be in here too.
Well, I, I don't, I didn't see it. I didn't. I'm saying, I know we came up last time. We said, because at that time, concern was we, we should be screwed up on our ordinance. The answer is we didn't. We actually adopted an ordinance that would prevent this from going further. So, that isn't the problem. The problem is, what did the code enforcement officer found, find when he went up there? And did he make a determination that these were pre-existing and allowed? I don't know if he did.
He did.
Well, I, I didn't see that. I know that was what was said. I don't know if he actually heard it from him.
Right.
But council has power. Council has power.
Power to do what?
To redirect things. We have the power.
To have ordinances which regulate things. We don't have the power to take away someone's animals.
No, but they shouldn't do that.
Can, can Tom contact SPCA or something? Because those goats are tripping over each other in that little tiny pen. I did say that.
Certainly could, yeah.
And also, as soon as you close your car door, those turkeys and goats are carrying on like crazy. You can hear them all over. Now, is that affecting his right of life?
Okay, but we don't. His reports are bad. It's too darn long. I'm trying to start reading them.
I'm sorry. I'll tell him the condenser.
I'll put Jim's microphone.
Well, yeah, I started, I started, I'm serious. I started reading this and going, I saw his conclusion, but okay, but I didn't even know this was about the goats. I thought this was about dilapidated property. To answer your question, Jeff, and I'll repeat this. The Borough can do things that are, what are, can address things that are considered public nuisances. So, if the code enforcement officer or council directs him, determines that this is a public nuisance, yes, we can do something. We can't address private nuisances. So, if I do something that offends my neighbor, that, that doesn't affect the general public, there's nothing we can do about it. So, I don't know which this falls under. That's why I'm asking, what did he do? He says all animals on site are properly registered and observed to be in excellent condition. I know what you're saying, they weren't in excellent condition, but I'm just looking at what the report says. Is that the only part that deals with the animals? Because the rest of it deals with yard, rush, tar vehicles. That's the only thing I saw about they all dealt with animals. It doesn't mention goats. It just says animals.
Yeah, it's all right.
Scrap has been removed. Junk vehicles have either been removed or made operable by registering and insuring. Saying the goats seem healthy. There you go. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move to our first agenda in business. Is to open Raina Fork Grant Project Big Packages for Earthwork and Pavers. And this will be the fifth rally.
Okay, the first bid received was from Lehigh Asphalt Paving and Construction Company.
Do you have a bid sheet on this one?
Yeah.
I don't see it. Okay.
Would you want mine?
No, no, I'll just write down a blank piece of paper.
Take Teresa's, take Teresa's.
Oh, there it is. There it is. Thank you. Lehigh Asphalt.
This is going to just be the unconditioned bid. I don't have to look for multiples, right?
Yeah, it should be one bid.
One, one total. Okay. So, Lehigh Asphalt's bid is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents. That's three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents. And there is a bid bond. The second bid is from BT Adams LLC. And their bid is two hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and ten dollars even. And there is a bid bond. And then the third, the third bid is from Sergeant Enterprises Incorporated. And their bid is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars even. That's two thousand, or two hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And there is a bid bond. And that's all I have. I only got three.
Well, the lowest bid is still sixteen thousand dollars higher, more than the bid, uh, grant we have, so. Anybody have any questions?
This is the last time we can do this, right?
Yeah, we're running out of time. The time for bidding, which is deeper into October.
What's your recommendation?
I just hate to lose that money, sixteen thousand dollars.
What's the timeframe on that T-Mobile grant?
September thirtieth, we have to submit it.
September thirtieth? Yeah, we'd never, you'd never make it. Never make it, we're sixteen thousand short.
How much we have to come up with out of our pockets, sixteen or seven?
Yeah.
At this point, I think we should just do it and get it done. I don't wanna have to come up with that. Two years, we have everything ripped apart at the park and.
We owe word to the low bidder. Can I go back with him and say, can we cut this out or can we?
You can try and do a change order, he can say no.
Okay.
But I mean, you can certainly do something, try and, as you're doing it, to say, you want to delete something. But he can say, nope, I wanna do exactly what's on.
Okay, but we have that opportunity.
We have that, it's a possibility, yeah.
And the possibility, if he doesn't wanna do anything, I might stop him.
If you, if council awards it, if council awards it and accepts this as a low bid, you're stuck.
Stuck with him, yeah.
What's his fee gonna be for a change order?
Oh, it's not so much of a fee, it's, uh, you know, changing some of the specs on this or whatever, to bring it down to sixteen.
Is there something that you could look at and just say, we could delete this? Cause I'm kinda looking at it, Harold, the only thing I'm not even sure you can do it would say, we'll accept the bid with a change order to what, you know, delete whatever. And he may not accept that, and so we, and then we lose it. Trying to think of different.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to think, because we cut it down to the minimum and we're, we have to do ADA access to it.
And you can't get rid of that.
No, no, I can't play with that. So they couldn't accept a contingent on negotiating or depressing.
I'm saying, you could try it, but I don't, it's really half-assed. Really technically, it should, it should be.
No, you shouldn't be.
You either accept it or you don't accept it.
And if you accept it, you can then say, you can try and negotiate something that, do a change order, but again, the contractor can say, nope.
Once we accept it, it has to be done, right? You have to move to next step.
The answer is yes. But like anything else, Joe, if you're, you go, you start doing something, you go, now that we're in the field doing it, we realize we really didn't need this part of the project. Can we agree to delete that? And if the contractor and the borough agree, yeah, you can delete something. But just like you may change a lot, you know, most times change orders are adding things, but it could be a deletion. And that's my concern when you're this tight, cause you know, that happens, you get change orders, they say, oh.
Yeah.
When they drew the specs, they missed this, and we gotta actually increase it.
Mm-hmm. Not do that, or we just give it back?
Yeah.
Either I try to get them down, or we give the money back. We don't have time to rebid it. We're gonna be running into October and asphalt's not gonna be.
Yeah, you're right, that's mid-October.
It's your call.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'd say if there's any opportunity to force it, if we say no, it's a definite no. If we try and force it, it's at least a possibility, it's a yes.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
So I would say try to force it.
Okay.
And get it wrapped up.
Okay, we need a motion and accept the low bid.
I'll make a motion to accept the low bid.
Okay. We have a first by Mike Belizia, second by Joe Seibert. Roll call.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes. Okay, the next item in the business is update on Trail Phase One Grant Project Bids, open on September tenth.
We had, as you've seen in our narrative here, the tree clearing, we had three bidders. American Outdoors came in at thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. BT Adams came in at thirty-two thousand, eight hundred. And Huffman Tree Service came in at twenty-nine thousand. And that was for the clearing of the trees. Then under the earthwork, we, only bidder we had was BT Adams, and he came in at sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. We awarded to Huffman Tree Service for twenty-nine thousand, and BT Adams for sixty-two, seven, forty.
Okay, we need a motion to accept those bids.
I'll make a motion to accept the bids we just talked about.
First by Joe Seibert.
I'll second.
Second by Mike Belizia, roll call.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes. Next item of business, approval for transition of the pension plan investment company from Truist to Principal Truist Company.
Truist.
Trust company.
We had discussed this, you know, last month. Uh, right now, we don't have time to do an RFP to look for any other investment, uh, company. As I have to let them know by twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, yeah.
Talk to twenty-nine. So certainly, we can watch them, and you can always do an RFP and look for another, uh, investment, uh, company.
Well, the motion should be to approve this transfer from Truist to Principal Trust Company. And you're right, and then, once they do that, give them a couple months, and we may decide that we wanna shop it around and see if there's someone else who wants to manage our pension funds. But you really don't have much of an option now.
No.
The way they wrote it, I can't believe they can force that, but the way they wrote it is, if we don't make a decision by the twenty-eighth, they're gonna send the money back to us. Which we, that can't happen.
Okay, any questions?
I don't think there's any questions to be asked, there are.
Okay, need a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the transition to pension plan from Truist to Principal.
Motion's been made by Benny Cutterford, need a second? Second by Joe Seibert, roll call.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Jeff Miller?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes. Next item, approve request for LaZan Township Purchase Road Salt and Anti-Skid.
We've been doing this for a number of years, they have no facility and they only have one or two roads that they love, so.
Anybody have any questions? Need a motion?
Harold, is that any inconvenience for our guys?
On occasion, on occasion it has been. But we'll work through it now, this year.
They can't be using much anti-skid.
They don't.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it can't be too, I mean, it may be an inconvenience, but it can't.
I hope you remembered the bill, Laurie, was it something like?
Yeah, there's, there's not much there.
Yeah, it's in the hundreds.
Hey, we need a motion for approval?
I make a motion, we approve the, the purchase of salt and anti-skid for LaZan Township.
A motion by Jeff Miller, need a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Joe Seibert, roll call.
Vincent Cutterford?
I, I have a question, I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm out of order, but I have a question.
I was just listening to his, his motion, where he said that we purchased the salt.
We're not purchasing it for them, we're just storing it.
We're selling it to them.
We're selling it to them.
They buy it from us. Which they say is different. I just wanted to be clear that we're not, I don't want that going on the record, that we're purchasing anti-skid for.
Yeah, right.
No, 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 that was LaZan Township. We, well, we buy it, we sell it to them, same price, we don't make any money.
Right.
As opposed to Lehigh, which apparently just stores it here.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I just, again, I just want clarification, that we're not accused of buying something for them.
Should he pull that back? Jim, should he pull, should he pull his motion to correctly state it?
I, what, I, honestly, what did you write as his motion?
Purchase.
To purchase.
I know, was that what you wrote?
Well, I didn't, I didn't complete it yet, cause Mike asked a question.
What are the minutes gonna reflect, Laurie?
Well, what he said, which is to, to sell.
Okay, okay.
Approve request, well, it should be to purchase, uh, which is.
To, to purchase the road salt and anti-skid.
Well, it is to purchase and then to sell to them at the same price. So that would be the motion, the motion, the purchase, purchase the salt and anti-skid. And sell to LaZan Township at the same price.
He just said we purchase.
Yeah, he only said purchase.
You're absolutely right, my apologies, you said it exactly the way it should've been said, I suppose.
He didn't say sell.
He didn't say sell.
Purchase.
He just said purchase.
He was thinking so. He didn't say we can give it to them then either.
Yeah.
So.
But it should say, the motion should be to purchase their, the salt, and then sell it to LaZan at the same price.
So should he pull his motion back?
No, why don't you just amend your motion, Jeff? Look, would you so amend it?
Will you amend it to say that?
Yeah.
We will purchase salt and sell it to them.
And resell it at our cost.
Yes.
And Joe, you would agree with that?
Yep, I'm.
That was, he was the second.
Okay, roll call.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes. Next item of business, update on fishing at the park.
Yeah, the fishing, we're gonna just put off until next year. The shed is down there, uh, but right now, we really don't have the time to, to get everything set up and, uh, hire people for this now, this late in the season. So we're gonna just put it till next spring.
You don't need anything?
Nope, just an update.
Okay, next item of business, discussion on short, short-term rentals and adoption of an ordinance.
A zoning officer, I brought this to the attention of council, uh, because there have been many inquiries in regards to this. And, uh, he wanted you to, to look at it and, uh, see what Jim Thorpe had done. This is their, their ordinance.
Does anybody have any questions?
Jim, what's your opinion on short-term leasing? Short-term rentals?
I do it every summer, Joe.
Yeah, no, I mean.
I do, no, people ask that. Short-term rentals around here, around Harvard and Monroe and some other counties, a lot of people complain about it. And I say, because, oh, it becomes a party house. And they said, I have rented a house on the shore for the last thirty years, it's a short-term rental, it's a week. It's not a party house, my kids and my wife are there and whatever. So, some people are concerned about short-term rentals. In, I'm not sure how much concern you have here at Wedley, I don't know if you've had any complaints about it. And Jim Thorpe got out of hand, where you probably have a couple hundred short-term rentals. And it does become a part, and a lot of those places do become party houses. And the neighbors complain because people are up night, you know, you're, you're away for a weekend, so you're out there, you're gonna have a few beers, you're gonna maybe have a fireplace in the backyard where other people don't like it. So that's why they did it in Jim Thorpe and some other places. I can tell you, Lehigh hasn't done it, we have some short-term rentals, but it hasn't become a problem yet. So some of our town, my townships I represent, some have done it, but some have not. Because they usually only address it when it becomes a problem.
I know it's a big thing out of Lake Hornby, cause I have relatives that live out there.
Oh, that's huge out there.
And all their neighbors sort out, cause they got a lot of money for the houses.
Yeah.
And now, you never know who's coming in from week to week.
Yeah.
And it just gets very annoying.
It is a big moneymaker, I know some places have tried to ban it, to ban it, and you can't ban it. It's a legitimate use of property, so you can't just say, no, you can't do it in our municipality. Actually, I had one or some property owners association try to do it, and of course, said, you can't do that. So, but you can regulate it, which is what these do. There's two ordinances that were included, that Harold had circulated. One is a zoning ordinance, it says it's only gonna be permitted by special exception in a certain area. And you know, the code enforcement officer said, you might wanna do that conditional use. Uh, I, I like special exception, that way you don't have to deal with it, um, but it's up to you. And the other ordinance is just licensing of these. Once they're permitted in the R2 zip district, or whatever district, they, you then, under those Jim Thorpe ordinances, they have to get a license every year. And then it's subject to being inspected. Now, your rentals are already inspected, but this is, that's why they do it.
Anybody have any questions?
I do. My, my first question is, um, we certainly don't want to, to, to have any problems, party houses, we'll just call it that. But we're also worried about, um, trail access and, and inviting people to be here, and those types of things, uh, to try to encourage economic growth. So in any way, does this deter that and, or eliminate it? Because I may not understand terminologies in here, but they can still have them, they just have to be regulated. So somebody wants to have an air, if I wanna, if I wanna, if I wanna rent my house out in the summertime.
Yep.
I'm, I'm gonna go away on vacation for two weeks, and I'm gonna rent it out for two weeks. Does this prohibit me from doing so? It does not, well, it depends on what zone you are in, and the way this is written. If you own a house, or someone anywhere owns a house that they want to, say, yeah, I can make good money as a short-term rental, and you can. And these people who do this, they can make a lot of money. What these ordinances would do, would do two things. Number one, say, you're required, in some zones, it's not be permitted. Again, if you do it, if you just allow in some zones. And secondly, even if it's allowed, it's allowed only by special exception or condition, which means they still have to go through, apply, the zoning officer turns them down. If it's special exception, they go to the zoning hearing board, if it's conditional, they come to hear it, you have, you actually hold the hearing. Now, what that means is, if you list it as special exception, or you list it as conditional use, they generally can't have it. I don't know if you read the whole thing that this code enforcement officer put in there, where I think he, at one point says, well, they, people look at zoning hearing boards as rubber stamps. Well, they're not quite rubber stamps for a special exception, but pretty close. But the same rules apply as a conditional use when it comes to you. Because if it's permitted by condition, unless there's some, something above and beyond what a typical short-term rental would be, it's gonna be allowed. It's just a matter of you can include conditions. But to answer your question, yes, it would deter some people from doing it, cause they're gonna go, I don't wanna have to go through that ever. So yeah, that would deter some people from conducting short-term rentals. My second part of my question is, and I accept your answer for what it is, so if they, if they want, if they wanna make the income and they wanna be legit, then they have to go through the steps of doing so. My, my second is, who regulates these, this, this ordinance? Who enforces, who is in charge of it, and who addresses problems if there are any? Well, zoning or police? Well, that's, the first one, the easy, easy part is, one of them is a zoning amendment. Of these two ordinances that were in this packet, one was a zoning amendment, it's an amendment to your zoning officer. So your zoning officer is the one who enforces that. So if someone comes in and says, my neighbor has a short-term rental, and he never got a permit to do it, or a zoning permit to do it, or it's not permitted in that zone, zoning officer is the one who enforces it. The second ordinance is the one that regulates, say, you have to have a permit, and then have, meet certain requirements. Generally, in the ordinance itself, it will appoint somebody. You can appoint your police, police generally don't wanna do it. So you then appoint your code enforcement officer, which is probably the same as our zoning officer.
Right.
So generally, I'm gonna say the answer is, it's your zoning slash code enforcement officer who enforces this. Okay. Okay. And then I personally, me, and again, I only speak for myself, cause I haven't discussed this with anybody here. Then, before I agree to any of this, I would like the zoning officer, the code enforcement officer, to sign off that this is a supportable, enforceable ordinance. That we don't have any problems, where they go, I can't, I can't do this because it doesn't say that, or I can't do that because. So just like, just like the ordinances that we've been fighting to try to make, to give them some teeth, like, I wanna just make sure that, before we, a problem.
So just like, just like the ordinances that we've been fighting to try to make, to give them some teeth, like, I want to just make sure that before we, a problem develops and you go, well, I really can't do anything about it now. Like, we're back into that same boat. So I personally would like reassurance by the person that has to enforce it that is enforceable. Does that make sense?
It does, but I can tell you, it is enforceable. This is an enforceable ordinance. If you put this in place, you can enforce it.
Okay.
I think what you're saying is, get all the bells and whistles in there that we want or need. So we don't, we don't...
You didn't miss anything.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, a lot of the things is also, you could say someone has a three-bedroom house, they're going to rent it for a week. Like you said, a party house, I mean, there should be something like, you can't put twenty-five people in there, because we're parking cars, we're doing this, we're, you know, I mean, it's not like we're...
Well, generally, it hap, when you have that, what these, and I, it's probably the second one that says it, that if you have these, you have to have the license, and you have so many bedrooms that you're allowed, there can only be so many people in each bedroom. And there has to be, for all the people who are there, there has to be parking spaces, and I know, X number of, one parking space for every two people there, I mean, and off, that's off-street parking. So generally, that's the way you control the number of people who visit. You don't just say you can't have more than twenty-five, because these places, you mentioned Lake Harmony, there are houses in Lake Harmony, there are ten, twelve-bedroom places, and they have a lot of people.
On page eight of the section one, section fourteen, it talks about maximum number of vehicles allowed, maximum number of occupants permitted.
I just, again, I just want to make sure that the people that are doing it have the power to do what needs to be done. So again, we don't have, like Mr. Baker said, that we don't look forward, or look ahead to say, you know, hey, now, now, now we have this problem, but we, we, we put something in that, that doesn't work. And, and if our, in our zoning, I know it's a Tom, I think he has some experience with this in, in other places. So I just would like his, you know, his opinion of it, is all I'm asking.
I think he gave it to you. What, what I remember I said, he writes a lot of letters, or a lot, he gives a long critique of these ordinances here.
I didn't, I didn't read the whole, I, I'm all...
I didn't, I didn't read the whole thing, I didn't have time.
I think we need to table this and review it a little more, because there's a lot of stuff here to read, and we only got it up front.
Right, you need another one.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would like that very much.
My suggestion is that we table it.
Whoever said it probably won't have a big issue here, when the trail opens, you may have people who want to use it. Although those who wish to use it are generally not partiers, if they're, they're trail people, those are bikers and athletic people.
So I know hill climb weekends, people that rent, try to go out of the area for lodging, so I know that might eliminate some of their travel.
Anybody else have any looking? Need a motion to table it?
I make a motion to table the ordinance for the short-term rentals until next meeting.
We have a first by Mike Belizia?
I'll second.
Second by Vinnie. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Next item of business is approval for sale of items on municipal. Sure everybody's seen what our police department has to get rid of. Does anybody have any questions? We need a motion for approval for a sale of items on municipal.
I make a motion to approve for the sale of items for municipal.
We have a first by Joe Seibert, need a second?
I second him.
Second by Greg. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Please have it. Okay, we're going to go, we're going to change the schedule around here a little bit, and we're going to go in the executive session now. Do we need a motion to go in the executive session?
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
We have a first, need a second?
I'll second.
First by Mike Belizia, second by Joe Seibert. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
And Laurie, the minute should reflect, it was your personal effort.
Okay, everybody turn their mics back on, please. I did, uh, Vinnie made it, Joe seconded it, I got it.
What did I do?
Thank you. You, you made the motion to come out. You made the motion to exit the executive session.
I'll remember.
Yes, you did, okay.
It's like two minutes. Remember stuff like that.
Okay, our next business thing is approve MMO for police pension plan and non-union pension plan.
Non-uniform.
Non-union.
Uniform.
Uniform. Okay.
Oh, sorry. I'm, like, do we, without him here? Could I make a motion that we accept the MMOs?
I'll second it.
We have a first by Mike Belizia, second by Jeff Miller. Roll call.
I'll come back.
Do Greg last.
Yeah. Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
And Greg, we're, we're voting on approving the MMOs for the police and the non-uniform plan.
Yes.
Okay. We're good, unanimous.
Okay, the next order of business is to appoint Mike Bogart as police chief.
Police chief conditioned upon the side letter of agreement being signed by the union. Because if he's, it's part of the, being part of the union or something.
I'll make the motion.
We have a first by Vinnie, second by Joe. Roll call.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
Unanimous.
You poor son of a bitch. Congratulations.
Jim, would you restate that motion?
The motion, yeah, the motion was to appoint Bogart as the police chief, conditioned upon the union signing the side letter of agreement. And I can tell you, the side letter of agreement, the second paragraph that I crossed out, that says, this gives me the benefits that I already have, I'm going to put language in there that says, and he will receive the same benefits he already has. I want to make sure, I, the intent was never to take anything away.
No, I just, I don't, just want to make sure that there, I don't want to assume things in a project.
I, I, I understand.
I got seven pictures. Thank you.
You're welcome, that was just a crock.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we're done.
Second?
Please.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?